Thirty in the City Council, Jeebus. Tonight, the invocation will be done by Pastor Dwayne Smith from Abundant Life, and then we'll follow that by the Pledge of Allegiance. Rise.
Father God, we recognize you tonight. I thank you for ordaining this council. Lord Jesus, ask me of the men and women of this council, Father, with wisdom, discernment, favor, we're asking for the blessings upon Fergus Falls. Father, you said if anyone lacks wisdom, he should ask of God who gives freely. Give your wisdom, favor, direction. May we be like you tonight, in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Let us do the flag of the United States of America and to the reward of gracious hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, I will call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Freymeyer.
Here.
Mortensen.
Here.
Hildy.
Here.
Fish.
Here.
Joe.
Here.
Tommy.
Here.
Clayton.
Here.
We have a quorum. With that, the first item is open forum. If anybody wishes to speak about anything, an item that is not on the agenda, if you care to come forward to the podium and state your name and the city in which you live. Thank you.
Mayor, councilpeople, I'm Robin Foss from Fergus Falls, a resident. I do not know any of you personally. It's not whether a city council member appears to be nice or a friend. I wrote a letter to the editor in the journal, April 8th, and I stand behind that letter in pointing out the behaviors of some city council members. The city council represents all Fergus Falls, both residents and businesses. I noticed there is no code of conduct on the city website. Code of Conduct sets the guidelines for expected ethical behavior. There was a code of conduct in place several years ago, and it was breached, and recommendations for ethics, educational training were made. One council member agreed and another refused. The one that agreed is no longer on the council. I read about this incident in a past online journal article as I was looking through YouTube videos. Now, there's an ongoing legal challenge issue related to whether the newspaper is a valid publication for public notices after the journal changed its format and frequency. As taxpayers, we are paying for this. The journal is 150 years old in this city. To attack our own paper from within the council is not the norm. Yes, citizens and businesses see the contention within the council. It has resulted in economic development teams now wanting to work with the council by stepping into current contentious situations. Members that fragment cohesive, positive work for the residents and businesses to counter what the council should represent. Such behavior thwarts those wanting to work with the council on economic development in an attempted partnership. Behaviors that fall below ethical standards of decency must be addressed by a code of conduct. A code of conduct is not about taking it to the council and remove or delete language to water it down to lessen accountability. Reinstate the post of the code of conduct from two years ago to the city website, please. Fergus Falls residents and businesses deserve full-throated standards, responsibility, and ethical behavior. The council owes this now and going forward. Accountability matters. Ethics matter. Decency matters. Behavior matters. Truth matters. Presentation matters. Standards matter. Representation of all city residents and businesses. Business matters, not just certain wards for reelection purposes. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Anybody else wishing to speak? Dwayne?
Dwayne Cookman, Fergus Falls. I'm the one that wrote the responsive letter to that. And I thought dialogue through my eyes. Dialogue was good. I don't think there was, there was some back and forth, but I think we need everybody's opinion. I think we have to weigh out what's important to the council, what's important to the city, how they want to move forward. There's going to be issues that last council made aware of. You know, I would say the Mall, TIFs, the Lagoon Park, okay? There's a lot of that, we're playing catch-up. When I say we're playing catch-up, this council, this time period. When we move forward, I had some other items here that I'm going to address too, but Robert's Rule of Order, I had asked for if we used it, and we did, we do, and Kildy gave me, or let me use, a copy of it. And I think that we need to brush up on that in how we use resolutions and motions, because I think sometimes we use them selectively. But I think if everybody was on the same page, I think it would go, and the understanding of Robert's Rule of Order would probably go better in how you present your case, when to present your motions, when you have the discussion, when you have a true debate, when it's questioned, then what the vote difference is. I think that was addressed. There's going to be issues tonight on cannabis. And I don't know if I can bring this up right now, but I think the biggest thing was the distance. Okay? If that's a regulation or an ordinance, okay, it's a hard number. If it needs to be changed, I think there needs to be a variance or you change the ordinance. Okay? To me, it's-
Mr. Mayor, is this appropriate to talk before and-
You can bring it up when we get to cannabis, Dwayne.
Okay. The other one, I don't know if it's on the agenda, is the D Lagoon Park. Okay? When it was brought up about that, it was in the note about the scale. I'm an engineer, I make prints. Everything's a one-to-one model in CAD. Okay? If there's any dimension on that print, it's represent to its true dimension. It's not scaled. I wanted to bring that up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Your Honor and councilmembers. I just have a quick question. As I was reviewing the board packet ahead of today's meeting, I noticed that there was a Board of Equalization meeting that was held on April 24th. My understanding of that meeting is that each ward is required to be represented, and there was representation from Ward 1, Laura Jo, there was representation from Ward 2, from Mr. Layton, and there was representation from Ward 4 with Councilmember Kildy. The notes specifically state that Ward 3 was not represented as Freymeyer did not attend. I just had a question, Councilmember Freymeyer, as to why Ward 3 was not represented at that meeting.
If I remember right, we don't have any dialogue between somebody in the open forum?
We can even get back to-
Otherwise, I'll just say that my work interfered with that. I, I'm a funeral director, and a lot of things happen in my life. So that's what I can tell you. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the response. I understand that as a busy professional as well, that sometimes your work comes into play. I also think it's important to represent and fulfill your obligations as a council member to communicate with staff when you can't. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further open forum items? If not, then we will move on to approval of the agenda. Any additions or deletions or movements that anybody has? If not, would somebody care?
I'd like to have, under the consent agreement, eight and nine move to the ordinances and resolutions.
We'll just, we'll just move them to the end after the others are. Is there any new information that you wish to discuss on those?
No, that's it.
If there's nothing new, then we talked about this extensively and-
Yes, there is some things new.
Committee of the whole, so then if there's something new, we probably should circulate that to the balance of the council and maybe before we make a decision on them.
I would like to present additional information, if I may.
Okay. Right. Would somebody care to approve the agenda with those two additions? Scott, would somebody care to second it?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Laura. All those in favor say aye. Resolution, sorry, it's a resolution. Roll call. Oh, it is. Okay, we can do a motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign, hearing none. The agenda is approved. There are no public hearings, there are no bids to award. There is a proclamation of a positive note regarding recognizing Small Business Week 2025, whereas Fergus Falls small businesses are the cornerstone of our local economy, driving innovation, creating jobs, and enriching our community; and whereas those local enterprises owned by neighbors contribute unique character and personalized services to Fergus Falls; and whereas business owners demonstrate resilience and commitment to our city's well-being; and whereas supporting these businesses strengthens our economy and community; and whereas Fergus Falls small businesses preserve our history and drive our future; whereas the Fergus Falls Chamber of Commerce champions small business growth and advocates for their success; and whereas Small Business Week, May 4th through the 10th, 2025, celebrates their essential contributions. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Fergus Falls proclaims May 4th through 10, 2025, a Small Business Week in Fergus Falls, and encourages all to recognize and appreciate small local businesses, actively support them by shopping locally, engage with the Fergus Falls Area Chamber of Commerce, City Council to foster a supportive business environment, celebrate Fergus Falls entrepreneurial spirit, and witness whereof I have hereunto sent my hand and caused the seal of the city of Fergus Falls to be affixed this, the fifth day of May, 2025. Mayor Hicks. Thank you.
Your Honor, just comment if I can.
Yes.
Do we have anything as a city set up, whether you and a couple councilmembers are going to go around and do anything for the small businesses, at least say hi, or anything? If we don't, I, I challenge you on Wednesday to go out with me and go to the small businesses if you want together.
Well, we can do that.
Okay.
Thank you. No, there is, there's never been anything set up.
That's good.
So, but that's a good idea. Right, on the consent agenda, there is a list, obviously, on the screen. You know, items eight and nine have been removed. The remainder are in place. The motion approving the minutes from the open and closed meetings of April 21, the city council meetings of April 30, the committee of the whole meeting, and the April 24 Board of Equalization. A motion approving licenses. A resolution accepting a $2,500 grant to the Fergus Falls Public Library from West Central Initiative to support the library's summer tutoring program and approving the related budget adjustments, and it feels like summer has arrived today. A resolution approving a conditional use to construct a 90-foot telecommunications monopole in an R1 district located at 601 Randolph Avenue as requested by ISD 544. Resolution delegating the Wetlands Conservation Act program duties to the Otter Tail County Land and Resource Management Department. Resolution accepting the plans and specifications for PI 5381, the 2025 mill and overlay project authorizing the, for the bits. The resolution accepting the project plans and specifications of PI 5382, the 2025 Seal Code project and authorizing the advertisement of bits. Then, resolution authorizing the Fergus Falls HRA to pursue a planned unit development for 801 West Stanton. A motion to hold monthly town meetings in city council chambers and on a quarterly basis, notice a town hall where a quorum of council members may attend. And finally, a resolution accepting the plans and specifications and authorizing the advertisement of bits for the Lake Alice Grit Trap Project. With that, would somebody care to make that resolution?
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second that, and then I have one comment on one item.
Thank you, Laura. Laurel.
On the number 11, monthly town hall meetings, I've had a request from a citizen that if the first one could be a noticed meeting to give people that have been waiting for this an opportunity to speak to the whole council.
Thank you.
Do as you wish.
Yep. Just a clarification, a quorum of council members means we all can attend?
You could all attend if, if so, if so wished, but there would be no business. There would be no business conducted in any of the town hall meetings.
One last thing, Your Honor. Number 12, do we, do we know when that Lake Alice Grit Trap project's going to start, and will it affect anybody around Lake Alice? So we just, just have a little information, because I don't know a lot about it.
We, obviously, until we go out for bids, we don't have a timeline, but yes, it will. It's going to be on the northeast and northwest corners of Lake Alice. With that, we have a resolution on the floor, so we'll do, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 So, Mr. Layton asked for item number eight to be removed from the agenda because he has additional information to discuss.
Thank you, Your Honor. As a council member, we've requested many times for job descriptions by both departments and employees. I understand the importance of the engineer department, but at this time, because the closed session permitted by Minnesota statute, and the opportunity we have through Robert's rules is we can move this to a closed session so the council could be brought up to speed in regards to the negotiations in regard-
Mark, I would stop you there. Let's, I don't think you can talk about that, so.
I just think it should come to the council.
The document on the table is regarding the appointment of a temporary engineer to represent the city in order that we can complete engineering on summer projects during the tip period where we do not have an employee-
Your Honor, I understand.
Or a designated engineer.
I still think it should come in front of the com, for council, so we can discuss it. Thank you very much.
You have anything else on that?
Not on eight.
Number eight. We'll take them one at a time.
Your Honor, on number eight, Your Honor, do we, there isn't a lot of information on this. Do we know if this is an employee, if this is an independent contractor? It was brought to my attention today that it may not be an employee.
It's an employee of more engineering.
I'm talking of the city.
No, it's not an employee of the, of the city.
Okay, so is it independent contractor? Is it fee-for-hire?
It's an independent contractor.
Okay, all right. Do we know at this time if this, this appointed engineer is going to have any leadership over the engineering department at this time, just so we know?
For this assignment, no.
For this assignment, no?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is purely documentation for signing engineering projects for the city, and the work is being done pro bono.
I would offer this motion to move forward with appreciation for more engineering, and Tyson specifically for being willing to do this.
Thank you, Laurel. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Scott. Roll call.
No.
Mortensen.
No.
Rachel. Yes.
Hildy.
Yes.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
No.
The resolution is approved. The next item on the agenda is item number nine, the resolution authorizing staff to seek a proposal from Stantec for the Regional Treatment Center using the remaining state grant funds.
Is that correct? Did I give you the wrong one?
Eight and nine.
I did. I wanted to move into the, no, nine is correct. I had a great conversation with a council member, Callum, earlier today, and as a council person, I'm looking at this to find out what the ultimate goal is in regards to the monies that are available yet for the Regional Treatment Center. Again, for full transparency to our staff, the council, and the community, I feel a little discussion should be held here as to, as we spend these monies, $3,500 in initial engineering and some $390,000 to bring this building to some code of being able to move into it, I would like to have some presentation.
I believe that is the purpose of this request, is for Stantec to come back with an alacart menu of items that could be done. Is that correct?
That's correct. Do you want me to speak to it again?
Sure.
Councilmember Layton, the request is simply to reengage with Stantec, to have them be able to present something to us with updated numbers based on some work that they've previously done. At that point, it would certainly be appropriate for the city council to have continued discussions about what the future of that building could be and what the remaining funds from the state could be used for.
I thank you. Again, I, I'm just trying to make it totally clear to the population. Our indication is indication, you know, ventilation, mold remediation, removal barriers, et cetera. And will this, has this gone to local contractors, or is this going to be stuck with Stantec?
We don't know. We don't have a proposal, so there's nothing on the table for the word being suggested.
Yeah, we're re-engaging with Stantec because they are the ones who have previously done the work using these same state funds, so they have the most recent information about the state of the building, and so the hope would be that they can resurrect some of the numbers that they have previously presented to the city council for further discussion.
Yeah, well, I appreciate the clarification for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Would somebody care to make the resolution?
I would.
Thank you, Mark.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Laura. Let's have Laura jump into this one.
There you go, Scott.
Was it Scott? Was it Scott? Okay. We'll let Scott do it, then. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
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 Joe.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. The next item on the agenda is the second reading of ordinance six.
Can I speak to one of the things on the consent agenda?
Sure.
Thank you. Lori Mullin, 2840, Lakewood Drive. On item 10, where we're talking about the planned unit development for Stanton, being that is so close to what we were talking about with the planned unit along the river as well with the dairy property, just wanted to make note that because the city owns that land, maybe we want to look at something that's referred to a community land trust. With that, a person would need to do TIF, and the city maintains ownership of that land. You can collect taxes on community land, trust land. I also think that when I was looking at the packet, they were talking about putting homes in there. I was looking at the Brookstone webpage and would really like to see probably the same home duplicated on those lots and having them in the same color, so it really does add some continuity and depend, you know, that it could probably tie into the land, the planned unit development that'll go along the river. When you do these community land trusts, these houses then are provided for affordable housing. Workforce housing is a term that's used. So what happens then is these houses, there's an income limit to be able to purchase these houses. They never do own the land. The community land trust owns it. And so when the house is going to be sold, they're only going to make so much profit on it. Let's say it's maybe, I'll use an example of a house that's $100,000, $100,000, and they can just make the inflation rate every year. So if they stayed in the house for 30 years, they, the house would sell for $160,000 to someone then that would have an income limit to, to purchase that. What that enables is that that is always an affordable unit for the public. As we're looking at that planned unit development, you will see up in Fargo and down in the cities where the streets are narrow like that, people are required to park their vehicles in the garage, and it just has a nicer, cleaner look to it. When I was looking at the webpage too for potential houses, windows are a big thing to me in how the windows are placed on a house and whether, what look that gives a house. So the one that I think would tie in best to what we're planning on doing next to the river eventually is called the Whitestone. And I didn't make enough copies because my printer shut down, but I'll start one on each side, and you can just take a look at it, but.
I don't know whether we have copies of the Whitestone one, but I know we've got copies of some of those. And these were just examples. They were not, obviously, nothing is set in stone at this point in time, so.
Just something to consider when we're-
Thank you.
As we're looking at that planned unit development, and so that we, because it's so close to what we wanted to do with a planned unit development at the dairy, that just ties in nicely, and we keep it looking very nice, and we can still reach that affordability thing if you want to look at a community land trust.
Right, thank you, Lori. So we'll move on to a second reading of ordinance 66, 8th Series, Amending Chapter 154.173, Pylon Signs. Would somebody care to, is it roll call? So just do a roll call.
Yes.
Abstain.
Rachel.
Yes.
Hildy.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Clayton.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. The next item on the agenda is presentation of claims in the amount of $870,339.44. Any questions, obviously, we can address to our city finance director if not.
I'll offer the resolution to pay the bills.
Thank you, Jim. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Laurel. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Hildy.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. The next item on the agenda is resolution approving and authorizing the execution of assignment and assumptions of rights and obligation agreement and consenting to a collateral assignment of tax increment note and redevelopment agreement, TIF District 410, assignment Sunset Ridge Apartments. And Bill, I didn't know if you wanted to just say a couple of words about, this is a housekeeping matter. The council did approve the TIF district, but it's to do with finance and banking.
Correct. Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, before you tonight, and you have this in your packet, the letter from Samuel, but you as a city council approved this TIF assignment at the last council meeting, and shortly thereafter, we found out that related to the developers financing with Fannie Mae requires that to come back to the city council. So that's why it's here tonight, and then with one of your ownership partners as well. And of course, Samuel's here tonight if you have other questions for him. But yeah, it's the same assignment that you saw before, but the additional words tacked on to that were relating to- on to that were relating to consenting to a collateral assignment as well, so the collateral with that. And that relates to Fannie Mae. You see some of those Fannie Mae documents within your packet. So that's what we have for you tonight. So that's why it's back in front of you.
Would somebody care to make that resolution?
I'll make the resolution.
Thank you, Scott.
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Scott, Rachel, and Jim Fish. Councilmember Mortensen.
Yeah, appreciate it, Your Honor. Bill, how, how rare or how normal is this to see a TIF come back to us for lender stuff that wasn't in the initial packet? I just want to know, is this business as usual or is this for the citizens of this community? Is this way off base from what you're used to?
You know, I can't really say if it's usual or unusual. I haven't been involved one that where the financing is through Fannie Mae. So we're talking with our bond attorney about this when it came back up and they said, you know what, it's really going to have to go back before the council because of that financing. Now, I believe, and we'd have to look back, the original assignment also allowed for the mayor and city administrator to handle any of the details basically and get that done from your last assignment. However, the financing for Fannie Mae doesn't fall under that. It has to come back to you because that's a Fannie Mae requirement. And actually, I guess our bond attorney did state that this is pretty common on their side. So in answer to you, it is probably more common because they had just done one the week before. So they were able to actually get the language through Fannie Mae pretty quick, which they said often takes quite a while just dealing with that agency. But they did get it through, get it approved. That's why it's in your packet and because they said, we had just sent one off to them last week and they pointed that out to Fannie Mae that this went before you for the previous approval with Fannie Mae. So that's, that's as much as I know about it. I'm certainly no expert with it by any stretch.
You don't, you don't see it very often. You haven't seen it that often. I don't want to put words in your mouth.
No, I haven't dealt with a Fannie Mae financing myself, so...
How about, one of the things that, that just puts pause with me and it, I'm not used to this type of a negotiation in business, but the lender wants to have that collateral hooked to that TIF.
Yep.
And so that, that puts a different dynamic to what we're doing here in my mind anyways. We've got another third-party entity here. Is that, is that something that concerns you or is that something that's unusual? Just guide me with that, Bill.
I do not see that as a concern because that was previously done by the city council for the same TIF district. Previously, that's where, I know it made reference in here to Wings Financial. The existing owner of that came back to the city council for an assignment of that to Wings Financial. So that would be much the same of how it's going to Fannie Mae then, in my interpretation.
And that's the thing, I want to get to the taxpayers of this city is that, hey, this is something that came about, you knew about it, we guided it and we went from there, that it wasn't something nefarious or anything like that on that end, that it was something that needed to be. How, how often is it that we don't know this, this second component, this second owner, this second buyer? Is that, is that something that you see very often where you have one person come up and represent themselves, but we have a second buyer that's involved?
I don't think there's a second buyer involved. I think this is assignment of, of finance.
You do have, he'll have to speak to that. I am, yep, don't know anything about...
Two owners. Two owners.
You speak to your...
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Thank you, councilmember Mortensen. So when you create an LLC in Minnesota, most of these properties, I can't say every single one of them, but most of them I'm familiar with, are purchased using some sort of an LLC or an LLP, like the current owner of the property, Sunset Ridge Apartments, I think it's of FF LLP. And so in this case, we created an LLC. I am the primary holder. It's split between Class A and Class B shares for the controlling interest. So I hold all of the operational control, but, and, and then I brought roughly half of the cash to the deal for this one and we took on some additional people as part of the LLC. Very normal structure, I would say. The vast majority of LLCs are like that. What happened is, so I, we had all of the, the funds committed. We got a call from one of them and he's like, oh, by the way, we just sold the property. I want to 1031 the money into it. Didn't think it was going to be a problem, so I said, yeah, I mean, it doesn't matter to me. The seller had already consented to a 1031 and a 1031 exchange just allows the tax deferral of the assets, of, of the capital gains from the asset that this person was selling. So he is a minority owner. He owns roughly 20% of the project, but to meet, and this is something I was unaware of, to meet the requirements, he has to take it as a tenants-in-common structure instead of being a part of my LLC. Because if he's a part of the primary LLC, he violates the IRS code for a 1031 exchange. However, with him being a tenant-in-common structure, he can meet that requirement. And so he's a tenant-in-common structure, but the tenant-in-common structure still defers all of the control to our primary entity. So none of the conversation, nothing that's been presented changes at all. And in regards to the question, we currently have 16 different TIF districts in Minnesota, including another one in Fergus Falls. Every single one of them has the financing agency involved, has a consent to the TIF district, including the other one in Fergus Falls. And so it's very normal for us to see that, whether it's Fannie Mae or anybody else, all of them want that consent in place. Most communities that we work in, it's just unadministratively and that's why I take responsibility for that. I didn't realize it was a council member issue. Most of the time, it would just be the city administrator and the mayor that would sign that and, and in my experience, it doesn't go back to council. So I, I learned that and I do apologize for, for taking the guys' time this evening again.
Thank you. All right, roll call.
Comment, please. I guess what concerns me is when you stood up here at that podium and spoke and presented, you didn't present that, that you had somebody else involved. And you were talking about, you're doing this all for the people, you're doing it for the, the people in the apartments and, and you're going to make Fergus great and this sort of thing, but yet you did not disclose that there was another partner with you or a, a business entity that you had to make this deal work.
It was actually filed with the Secretary of State. And so there was full disclosure with our original LLC.
But you didn't, you didn't present it here that night to the council. And I guess that's, I, I just want that to be very upfront and that's why I kind of took a step back and go, wow, you know, what's, what's this about? So that's where I'm at with that.
I appreciate the comment.
With that, roll call.
Mayor.
No.
Mortensen.
No.
Rachel.
Yes.
Hildy.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Callum.
No.
The resolution is approved. The next item on the agenda is the resolution rescinding resolution 75, 2025, an interim use permit for Sugar High located at 112 East Washington Avenue. Maybe the city attorney could just kind of run through a little bit of the logistics on this because it's the first time for me and first time, I think, in fact, for a long time that the council has had something along these lines. Yep, even Jim does not remember one like that.
Yeah, this, this is, this is the opportunity of a council...
Can we get him into the mic?
This is the opportunity for the council to do an action or to undo an action. The council has its full authority to make its own decisions and it has full authority to change its decisions if that's what you choose. So the question was posed, how to position this back before the council and that's why at the committee of the whole meeting, Mr. Rachel's brought a recommendation to bring this back before the council through a, a motion to place on the agenda a resolution to rescind these ordinances or these resolutions. And that's how this matter gets positioned back before you. And it's completely up to you whether you wish to entertain that or not. Since it's a resolution rescinding a resolution, you will be, it will necessitate five yes votes to pass. If it doesn't get five yes votes, it doesn't pass and the, and the, and the action stands.
Does everybody understand that? Somebody's saying we have to have five yes votes to rescind it and then after that, if, depending on whether, if it, if it fails, then the resolution of April 21st will remain in place, so...
Mr. Mayor, I understand there was some new information that one of the councils, council members had fallen between when he voted the way he did on cannabis and then in between there to the next meeting is why he rescinded that. He, he can do that, correct?
He can, yes.
Yes. So it would be good to hear, hear the reasoning and I know you've got a process to go through, but I, I think it's warranted to hear, you know, that for the public.
If we can get a resol, if we can get a resolution...
Yes.
Scott, would somebody care to second it?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jim.
So the reason I rescinded, asked for this was councilman Mortensen brought attention at the very end and was dealing with the state of Minnesota and dealing with the setbacks and dealing with parks and dealing with the school districts. And so I went back and, because I was on the committee for this ordinance of, from the cannabis committee, went back and looked at everything. And we, the state of Minnesota does not give us a guideline. They just say, here's what you can do. If you don't do anything, you can have this anywhere you, they can do it anywhere they want in the state of Minnesota. Am I correct?
That's correct.
So we sat down in the committee and we start, looked at 500 feet. You can only go up to 1,000 feet. You can't go any more than that. I know the state said that. And so we went and settled at 250 feet. When we started this, we were, we were going to go to B6 zone and then it went down to B3 zone, I believe, trying to help all the two existing businesses who are in town. And so at 250 feet, they fit their parameter. We laid out the new pad, splash pad, Magnuson Park, any daycare, any drug rehab, any churches. Help me out if I'm forgetting. School, and the schools, of course. And so when this all came about, councilman Mortensen brought up about the park here where we're at here right now and of course about the kids using the Riverwalk. And so with that being said, and then he read a whole bunch of stuff and I, I'm glad he did his research, but he used Google AI, which is, it is what it is. I don't, I didn't know that when he did it. I had no idea, but I did find out it was Google AI afterwards. And so I didn't, I mean, I was grateful for the, for the information, but I didn't believe in Google AI. So I went back and looked and we as a city or as a, as a council back in October, voted, I think it was October or November, we designated these, these places where we wanted to be the 250 feet apart. And so the, the Riverwalk was never discussed and everybody fell on the parameters and it didn't matter if it was Sugar High or Elevate, anybody who wanted to do it could follow into this place, we thought. And so at that night, when it voted, I was very, I was trying to figure it out and you could watch the video. I didn't, I wasn't sure which way I was going to go. And so I went conservative and I voted no. And after sitting back and thinking all this, I was wrong. They followed every rule that we set or every ordinance we set out and now it come back and Mr. Mortensen didn't, he wanted, he didn't think it was right and that's his opinion, but I was wrong. And so I don't believe the Riverwalk. I don't believe this city park is any, is, is a kid, kids for kids or children. Spees Park is a rental pavilion. So that I don't believe is a, is a child's park like we designated the splash pad and the playgrounds and all these different places. That's why I changed my, changed my mind and brought it back.
I mean, the goal is to take the vote and if it, obviously if it fails, then...
Fail's...
If it fails, then we're done with discussion. If it passes, obviously then the original application will come back on to the table, so...
Your Honor, can Mr. Nicomole just clarify for us if we are voting to rescind the motion from before or something to do with changing Mr. Rachel's vote?
The motion is to basically repeal what you did previously.
Okay. Based off of new information, which is what we heard, which...
Correct. But based off my opinion to bring it back to ask for that, it was new, I can just ask for any type of a decision I made. I made a wrong decision, I thought, I just explained what it was, but that's not the real reason why we're sitting here.
Yep. Okay. Didn't have to, it's his opinion, doesn't have to have new information.
It's my opinion.
Yep.
So we have a resolution to rescind, some roll call.
No further discussion, is that correct, Your Honor?
Sorry, did you have a question?
I think there's, and again, I'm going to address now the citizens of Fergus Falls, the taxpayer. The city has to name at least one cannabis facility by state law. The state law is very unclear as to what is right and wrong, what's dictated this, what's dictated that. So let's remember one thing. The prior mayor and administration wrote the ordinance that says 250 feet. The store cannot be within 250 feet of an attraction, an attraction of all ages. If you go back to Gary Spees's initial master plan, it talked about, it talked about, it talked about the Spees property being an attraction for all ages. We, the division of the house, if you want to call it, we are following the ordinance. 250 feet is 250 feet. Now, there are opportunities for us to make some changes, but if Kyle was here tonight, I'd ask him, I drove through that street sign, but I, I just didn't think it was, I just didn't think it was there. We are voting on an ordinance. We're going to follow the law, which is the ordinance that was done by Ben Shire and the previous administration. That's the position I'm going to hold.
Right. Thank you.
One point of clarification. May I, please?
Sure.
Spencer McGraw, 1708 South Cascade. Talk about Google AI came up. Talk about how this determination of 250 feet came up. Was a survey done? Was a trained surveyor brought out to make sure there's a determination of 250 feet? In Otter Tail County, I'm not representing the Otter Tail County Land and Resource Office right now, but we require surveys for things like this. Not Google Maps, not the Otter Tail County GIS website, which is not survey grade. It says it on a watermark on every single picture you print. You cannot take that data to the bank. I'd like to have an explanation, Mr. Mortensen, if a survey was done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGraw. I appreciate it on that end. It was done by Otter Tail County Property Taxes and that's a way that this city does almost all its measuring. This city does not go out for other ordinances and do a survey to get that done. We have all kinds of ordinances in the city that we do that are actually our local laws. And so to, to ask the city to do that type of a survey, I think is inappropriate at this time with it unless we would ask that...
Were pins found? Thank you.
Thank you. Then let's, let's kind of go on this because it...
Just to clarify, Your Honor, we're, we're literally just voting on...
We're voting on whether to rescind it.
Yes.
And, and then, Your Honor, we'll...
Then there will be another, another discussion about the actual...
Where we can let the public...
Correct.
Get in. Okay, good.
So with that, you got to do a roll call. Yep.
Mayor.
No.
Mortensen.
No.
Rachel.
Yes.
Hildy.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Callum.
No.
Clayton.
No.
So it is four and four. I will vote in favor of rescinding the ordinance, or the resolution. So the resolution is approved. Now, the next part is, do we go...
I, I think what I would do is take up the...
Elevate.
Elevate. And then I think I would take up these matters to address the interim use permit.
Right. So the next item is the same discussion on Elevate.
I'll offer that motion.
Thank you, Laurel. Would somebody care to second it?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jim. And just go for a roll call. It's the same, same deal.
Mayor.
No.
Mortensen.
No.
Rachel.
Yes.
Hildy.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Callum.
No.
Clayton.
No.
I, I will vote in favor. The resolution is approved. Now, then, now we move into the interim use permit discussion?
You may.
So now we, we go back into a resolution... So now we, we go back into a resolution to provide an interim use permit for Sugar High at the location of 112 East Washington.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Scott.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jim. Discussion.
Your Honor, council members, the resolution that was just offered to approve the IUP was done so without conditions. So I'm just making you aware, previous discussions you've had, had a handful of conditions pertaining to sampling, pertaining to hours of operation, and then the length of the interim use permit, which can be anywhere between one year and five years. And so I, I would maybe suggest that if the council wants to add these conditions, they should amend the resolution that's on the floor.
Your Honor, I think we should just go back and I know we've talked about five years and two years, and I think either one of the, they didn't care which one it was. I know Mr. Mortensen said the five-year thing was for their investment, and I agree. But also if two years is going to, is going to make this work better, I would go with the two-year either. You don't want the rest of the stuff, like the hours we put out, we put the hours and no sampling, and I don't know what's, I don't remember all the rest of them, but you have in front of you.
It was, the conditions were a five-year timeframe for the interim use permit for taking Sugar High, written consent of the tenants, for the housing located above the retail establishment, business hours to be limited 10 o'clock till 8 o'clock, and no consumption, including sampling on the premises.
And I would offer, that'd be the same, I would like to see.
Right. So Scott is amending his resolution. If Jim is, oh, no, you made it, actually.
No, I didn't say anything.
Oh, wait, okay. So is that good, good with you, Jim?
That's fine, yes.
Right. Okay. So the, the resolution is amended to include the conditions as, as were written.
Okay. Your Honor, do we have the chance to add to it, a motion to it, or add to that amendments or not really at this point?
You can make a suggestion. If these two agree, then yes.
Okay. I, I'd like to, you, you, you had the motion in there, you had the tenants above, you had different things like that, didn't you, that it had to have?
Correct.
Yeah. And, and I'm totally for the five-year. I, I don't want a two-year for these businesses at all from a business standpoint. But you have the tenants above that you are concerned with. How about someone that shares an adjacent wall? They share an adjacent wall, which is literally almost the same as the tenants above. I would like Mr. Fish and Mr. Rachel's to add to their motion that permission from the tenant that shares an adjacent wall, these downtown businesses are so tight, a lot of these buildings are a hundred and some years old, I want to make sure that we don't have neighbor-to-neighbor issues and that this would, would assist everybody to be happy in, in where they're at.
So Your Honor, clarification, neighbor-to-neighbor upstairs or neighbor to downstairs? Upstairs to downstairs.
Neighbor-to-neighbor downstairs, if there's an apartment downstairs, and neighbor-to-neighbor on adjacent side. So if, just if you have a connecting wall, if you share a connecting wall, a connecting floor, a connecting ceiling to the establishment, I would like to have their permission or, or their blessing to do this because it, it truly, we don't, we don't, I don't know if we're going to have an issue or not with it, but these people's lives are affected above, below, and on each side. And that's all I'd like to see, and there wouldn't be any further part to that I'd like to see of the motion.
I guess my discussion is, do we have that right to do that to the businesses and to the residents? I mean, we have ordinances in place already before the cannabis about what goes on upstairs. I mean, so I know that, I asked the question, if the, if beans, you live in a residence, a business, business area, you give up your right, I shouldn't say your right, businesses, ordinances come first. Is that not true, or am I wrong on that?
Ordinances come first?
Of, of the businesses. Because if you're residential, you're, you understand that you're staying in a business atmosphere, a business zone, I guess I call it. That's my question.
It's zoning.
Yeah, it's zoning. So.
One thought, I guess, if I can speak to that, I, to me, an exterior wall, even if they're common walls, they are built structurally exterior versus an up-and-down scenario. I think they would provide a little more protection. Yes, it is a common wall, but it is a structural wall where ceilings are not necessarily structural in the same way.
The other question I have is all, just to reiterate the definition, if there's Sugar Highs here, and I know Mr. Anderson, in the, midway, mid, can't think the name out, but anyway, Kevin Anderson here, but if their wall, if their, if their walls are joining, we know that, and then upstairs, but if there's somebody upstairs having a smoke, let's say, there's nothing we can really do about that because it's legal in the state of Minnesota. It's in your, it's in your residence.
Well, I mean, these buildings are not necessarily have, have common walls either. They're built independent of each other and they just so happen to butt up against each other. So they are separate structures.
And so we already have the ordinance sample in the business, so that's, so business-to-business are fine, it's upstairs. So I'm not too, I don't want to muddy up the ground because it could be, you know, he did this or she did this or whatever. We already have that ordinance there, so I just don't, I think I'll leave it alone.
I could answer one of the questions that was brought up. As we mentioned before in a previous conversation, the conditions that the council deems appropriate opens the list to anything we'd like to do. We can attach any condition we deem appropriate. And that's where it was suggested that adjacent businesses would have to agree in the very first discussion on this last month. And I would agree with Mr. Mortensen that having the agreement, having the acceptance of the adjacent businesses would be appropriate. We expect that of our residential people that want to put chickens in their backyard. They have to get their neighbor's blessing. And I think that this is going far beyond that as far as the impact on the neighborhood.
I think, Your Honor, if, if I may, I think, you know, the adjacent business part, and we're not just looking at this matter, we're just, I, I think it's just, it's good for business, it's good for the community, and it's good for the business that's going to be there for the long haul, that they had permission, they work with them, and that we don't run into legal disputes. This is such a high, highly contested topic that you could have lawsuit immediately. So I just, I'm doing it for the good of everybody involved, and that's, that's the reason for it. Whether it comes through the walls, I don't know. I'm just, I'm looking for something that makes our community whole and our businesses work together.
I think, but at this point in time, I don't think Councilmember Rachel or Fisher.
Here's my, here's my, the way you framed it, if the neighbor doesn't want it there, they can put a protest up and stop. I think that, so that makes it so anywhere they go, they can get stopped. And so I don't, you know, we're a business friendly, we need to be business friendly. I am not in favor of ever having marijuana in Fergus Falls. I've said that all along. My chief told me that you are going to have a store in town, and that, so I have to change my attitude and I have to also remind us myself that this is a business no different than anybody else. We put the rules in place, or the ordinances in place for them to run, and that's what we need to do.
One of the hardest things for a business when.
Laurel, I think, I mean, I think everybody on this, I think everybody gets your, knows where you're coming from, Mike.
I think from my perspective, I agree with Scott. I would rather not too, but Minnesota's decided differently, and I think at this point, we are probably open to lawsuits on either side. And so I think we need to look at it from the perspective of the best decision we can make without fear of that. I mean, it's always something to take into account, and we don't want that, but I think one could argue that point in both directions.
I think we should just call for the vote and get, or just do a roll call.
Your Honor.
Your Honor, one second. Are you calling for just the vote on the amendments or the full vote?
I think we should, I think we've discussed this forever.
I, I think what I don't, what I.
And at some point in time, we just need to vote it one way or the other.
Here's what I'd like to do. I'd like to make sure that some of the public gets a chance to say something. This is important. We heard, we heard through different avenues, they didn't get a chance.
I think council members have, I think, I don't think anybody is not aware of everybody's opinion on, on the council, but if somebody in the audience wishes to speak.
It's good for our residents.
Let's do that. Yep.
My name is Liz Jones. I'm at 416 North Union. And Mr. Mortensen, I actually have the privilege of having a business right beside Chris, and I can tell you that I, I don't even hear what goes on over there, much less smell anything that's happening there. So I don't feel that this situation of businesses beside each other is even going to be an issue when they've already stated they're two separate walls, and I've been next door to Chris since the beginning of the year, and there's been no issues since.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak?
Your Honor, while Robin's approaching, can we clarify for the public? We have received letters from everyone in the residential unit attached to the proposed site for Sugar High in agreeance. Is that correct? And none of those have been rescinded?
From the residents, from the residents above, yes.
Okay.
Robin Foss, resident of Fergus Falls, in business for 20 years, six in Fergus Falls. I deal with people with chronic pain, and that has not even been talked about. Now, years ago, people would have loved to be able to have access to cannabis. People with osteoporosis, where their bones are deteriorating and the muscles attached to them are contracting and spasming to try and stabilize their uprightness in their bodies. People with MS, the coating on their nerves, which there's thousands of nerves in the body, starts to deteriorate. That's like taking an electrical cord and you start breaking the, the covering off of, off of the nerves themselves. Now imagine grabbing onto a extension cord with several breaks in the, in the covering. This is what's happening in people's lives every day and every night. And they can only take so many pain pills. The doctors are not prescribing them anymore. And so this, with having cannabis close by, they may come from a low-income housing, and they may come from their own house. They can't drive to the other side of town. They may be able to get into their electric wheelchair and get uptown. They have power over their own situation. They don't have to wait for a doctor to okay it because Minnesota passed the law. And people, we have to consider all walks of life that live in this city and that pass through this city. I have people that come from the cities to have me work on their chronic pain through people in this community and this region who have mentioned that. Now, if they come and they are in the position where I'm beyond helping them in those types of cases that I mentioned, is that if they would want to know, is there a cannabis store here? You know, can I, can I go, you know? And so they can access that. They can access that. So think of debilitating pain that never quits 24/7 in varying levels. You don't sleep, you can't even operate. So after having lived this of helping people, I would like the council to really consider outside peripherally, not right here, on supporting a business in this community that can help those people. There are recreational users, yes, but it's under Minnesota law, they can. And if you go down to the liquor store down here, THC is sold in THC drinks. What is THC? It's a derivative of cannabis. It is how many feet from Spees Park? Okay? So if you're going to say, and liquor is a controlled substance, so is cannabis. So we have to think not right here. And so, you know, you have to take every consideration here, not just because you don't believe in cannabis and that's how you're going to vote, every time. So this is about all walks of life, all people, not just certain people in the community.
Thank you, Robin.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Yes.
I wasn't going to say anything on this subject, but after hearing what was said about, you take it all walks of life. All I'm hearing about is the so-called medical end of it. There is another end of it. I spent 40 years in law enforcement. I spent another two years in drug enforcement in the Korea, country of Korea. I have seen what marijuana does. It's not all roses. It may help some people in medical-type situations, but like I heard this last lady say, take all walks of life. Consider this too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Emily McCune, owner, co-owner of Sugar High. I want to thank the passion and sharing of the community who are passionate about fighting on behalf of allowing cannabis, but we already fought that fight. We are not here to persuade you that we should legalize cannabis. That's already been done. We are almost two years into that, okay? This is a zoning issue. It feels to us and as a community that the city council, the ones authoritizing all this, were given an inch and are trying to take a mile, okay? Thank you, Mr. Rachel's. I respect and appreciate your words. You're right. We have been obliging and compliant, all of the predetermined and established ordinance, law, code, and right now, what the collective majority, or at least half of you, what it seems like you're trying to do is use your opinion to make new laws. That's not fair. We have been abiding by all requirements thus far, both Elevate and my business. We have been compliant, we have been tolerant. You're taking your opinion on cannabis. Again, I will reiterate, it doesn't matter what your opinion on cannabis is. We are a legal operating business, both right now as a hemp industry business and the upcoming marijuana, all cannabis. The proposition that we would have to get adjacent businesses approval? We're a legal business. That's bottom line, okay? Please, just cut us some slack. We're doing such great things for our community, whether or not you've worked in law enforcement for 40 years and seen what marijuana can do. We are educated. We are educated in the bad and the good with cannabis. It is a psychoactive substance. We appreciate the opportunity to be so accommodating and, you know, offering up to two. You know, I think both Chris and I can agree that we're hoping we will be those two. An attraction within a park. If the Riverwalk was not predetermined as a defined attraction, now you're trying to go make it up as one. That's not fair. This is an unnecessary delay in a rapidly approaching industry, and we are poised and we are ready, and we just really, really, yeah. Just cut us some slack. We're doing good things. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Is that before Robin, is anybody else wish to speak?
Mike Donahue, Ward 4. I find it ironic that earlier in today's meeting, you declared this Small Business Week, and now you're trying to hinder small business development in Fergus Falls. You know, there, there, there's a little irony there, either side of the fence. I think the due diligence has been done by both owners. I, I have frequented Emily's business. I have not gone to Chris's yet. I apologize. I am a medical marijuana patient for chronic pain. The Minnesota Medical Marijuana Program, as it was prior to the legalization of marijuana for recreational use, was a bismuth. It was extremely expensive and very challenging to get what I needed. So what did I do? I took to going to the Upper Peninsula of Michigan. Every time I go there to resupply, I'll buy three or four months at a time. Honest to God, half the cars in the parking lot were from Minnesota or North Dakota and were, what, 600 miles away? I would rather spend the $3,000 to $4,000 a ye, a year personally that I spend in Ironwood, Michigan, I'd rather spend it in Fergus Falls businesses and not have to drive 12 hours one way, but that's a different story. I think they've done the due diligence. If it's a distance concern, and I was around in the zoning. If it's a distance concern, and I was around in the zoning process of that, are distances then measured as a crow's fly or as a child could approach the business? The intent I heard through the zoning process was, it was how far it is for a person to get from point A to point B.
There's actually a contradiction in the two documents. One says from border to border, one says kind of from attraction to establishment.
Your Honor, can I speak to the, as the Chair of the Planning Commission at the time?
Yeah.
Thank you for your comment, I know you were involved. I think it's important to realize that the intent of this, from a planning commission perspective, was not to look at the Riverwa- I, the council is a separate beast, but I was Chair of Planning Commission at the time. From the planning commission perspective, the intent was not around identifying City Hall Park or the Riverwalk. And I know I have other planning commission members in the audience today that I think would echo that if asked. But the intent was never, when we circled things to try and figure out how this would work, those areas were never circled in the planning process. Right or wrong, they weren't, but I think even in conversation in the planning commission, we were talking about things that were, majority of the use was for kids, like playgrounds. And I think it's important to look at the fact that we're going to allow these licenses because we have to, but it comes down to, we have trust with these businesses, and I would much rather issue these licenses as a councilperson at this time to a business that's followed the rules with the THC and that we have trust in a relationship with than somebody coming in here that we don't. I think that's in the best interest of our citizens.
And the other thing, the final thing I will bring up is, they're going to be selling cannabis. They're selling cannabis right now. They're selling CBD. CBD is a derivative of hemp. Hemp is cannabis. The Fergus Falls Liquor Store, which is 66 feet away from a city park, sells cannabis. Isn't there a little dichotomy going on there? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Cecily.
Thank you, Cecily Cookman, Fergus Falls resident. From what I'm seeing or hearing, it sounds like the 250 feet is the, kind of the stickler here. And my question to all of you, or maybe to Mr. Nicomo, is, is there any way that, being that was passed last year by the council, is there any way that that could be amended or changed by the council to accommodate some of this? Because there are family parties that are happening at Spees Park, and I do agree with what Emily McCune said. This is not a personal issue. This has been passed, and this is allowed by the state, whether I believe in it or not. And there, you know, this business should be allowed within Fergus Falls according to the laws. I just ask you tonight, being this is 250 feet, and there are children that are in these areas, please tread lightly, because I would hate for the citizens of Fergus Falls to have to pay for a lawsuit. And I guess my analogy would be is, I could ask you tonight, please, if you would allow me to go 40 miles an hour through town. I really need to go 40 miles an hour through town, and if you could pass that and allow me to do that, I think the police are still going to stop me and give me a ticket if it's 30 miles an hour. So this 250 feet seems to be a stickler, if you could please look at that again. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Your Honor, this is going to go over the top. You ready? I'm going to make a motion to amend the motion on the floor.
There was a resolution on the floor already.
Yep. I'm going to make a motion to amend that resolution and add to it, as was described earlier, let's get the true point, property line to property line. If they're not going to trust Mr. Mortensen or Rachel's, let's draw it out. I think this should be part of that motion or resolution.
Your Honor, I think it's a definition of where that property line, where it goes to is what it is, what that designated area is. And right now, we don't, that's not in our ordinance. Designated areas are for, I think we have five of them, was there five or six of them in there? I don't remember what it is. And so it's not about defining the distance.
Alan, then, that's the last comment. I think everybody knows where the city council sits. I don't think we need to rehash each-
I think everybody has the right to have their business and to continue on and make a livelihood. To me, I think the difficult part here is, it's neither the council, it's neither those who are pro-cannabis, who are anti-cannabis. To me, the problem lies in one spot. We have a discrepancy where the borders are measured. I think community development here in Fergus should have looked into that, exactly how that's measured. We were asked to vote on this that went against the ordinance as a clean document, that nope, everything is good, we should vote on this.
I don't think-
No, please, please, Anthony.
I don't think this is a community development issue.
But it was presented by community development director.
But it went through planning and-
But what I'm saying-
Community development is just the vehicle that passes it through, but it was approved by Planning Commission.
Okay, but we still vote on it, though, Anthony. I know it goes through Planning Commission, but we still vote on it. So what I want to, what I want to talk about is, it's neither pro or against. In my opinion, it was the way it was presented. It was a flawed presentation, because it said, there's 250 feet. Well, if you measure it one way, maybe it fits. If you measure the other way, it doesn't. And I think that's the issue, to me, and I can't vote against an ordinance. You know, I can't, I can't say, hey, people of the 3rd ward, I'm not going to vote against an ordinance that's set already here in City Hall. So it's not that I don't want it, or I do want it. It has to do with the way it was presented to the council. And that's what I see, is the stickler here. And I think others feel the same way.
Your Honor.
Thank you.
I think, I think, Your Honor, that's a scapegoat, that's not appropriate this evening. The issue before us is definitions, it's not distances. Because the distances are irrelevant if these sites don't have an attraction that is aimed towards children within them. The definitions don't, or the distances don't mean a thing, it's definition. We, as staff, myself, and our community development director, and the Planning Commission, and the Cannabis Committee, and the previous council, were working under the definition that the City Hall and the Spees Park did not include attractions for children. So to say that this was presented incorrectly or poorly is a complete scapegoat, because this is simply a matter of definition. Does this council feel the definition of attraction for children meets these two sites? And that's a determination you guys have to decide. We were informed at the last meeting that the Cannabis, Office of Cannabis Management is not going to define that, and that's really a local decision that has to happen. If we define it, if five of you define it as not an attraction for children, then distances mean nothing, completely irrelevant. So I think that you just misrepresented that and framed that up in a very unfair way to the staff that has put time and energy, hundreds of hours into this, and ultimately the council just needs to make a decision whether or not they feel the definition meets the attraction for children.
Just a follow-up to Andrew, and I appreciate his words. Can you give us then, that weren't, I wasn't here on the council, can you give us your rationale of why that would not be an attraction, why Spees Park isn't an attraction, so we know? Give the rationale, because-
I don't think it's a personal thing.
No.
I think it would be-
But it's important for the citizens to know.
Well, Your Honor, my rationale is completely irrelevant. I'm not a decision-maker on this, and I don't have a strong opinion either way.
There was a committee that basically defined that. So I think, you know, everybody spoke, but, oh, it would be nice to have a vote, just to move on, otherwise we're going to be here.
Can we get the other business owner to speak at least?
Well, Chris will get an opportunity, because this is just about Sugar High at this point. We have yet to talk about Elevate, so, okay, go ahead, come on. Come on down.
So Deborah Zachman, Fergus Falls. When you talk about an attraction for children, I believe that it says regularly, an attraction for children. Not once in a while, but regularly, so keep that in mind, please.
Thank you. With that, I think, no, we need to vote, because otherwise we will be here forever. And I think everybody knows, everybody's personal opinion, so.
He was on the committee.
Yeah.
I just wanted to back up what Andrew had to say. I was, I was a part of the committee, and I think that this discussion is a good example of just how difficult the situation was. The committee did its best last year to bring forward something that our police chief was very much suggesting that we do, that we get something on the books so that we've got a way to deal with this. And this is the way the process works, and the people aren't happy about it because it's messy, but that's the way some processes are. The things that we learned along the way was that we could provide access without these conditions and not have this mess, and we did that. If these companies want to set up in B6, go for it. No interim permit, none of this mess, go for it. If you want to be downtown, this is what you go through, and that's how that played out. And what is specifically different in this case is that Sugar High is making their application from a different place. When we were talking about this as a committee last year, we had two specific addresses on Lincoln Avenue. Now Sugar High is applying from a new place, and in my view, that opens it all up to start over.
Come to the podium, Chris, if you could.
My name's Chris Stock. I've lived here for 40 years. I'm a registered nurse within the state of Minnesota. I've ran a compliant business this whole time in the two and a half years that I've been open, sorry. And I would like to answer to you, Scott, have you guys looked what's available in B6? Because there's nothing for rent other than a 90,000-square-foot building. And if you're saying that's reasonable, you're unreasonable.
Because it's B6 and above, so that includes all of the industrial space. There is lots of-
Have you looked in the industrial spaces, sir?
There's lots of-
Okay. Oh, there are?
Lots of room.
I've looked with city officials, city staff in this building, and there is almost nothing for rent. So to put us out of downtown with 14% of the businesses already closed down there, you're making a disservice to all the people that are downtown, that are going to want our business, the few hundred people we'll bring in a week. So I just want to make that clear. People are going to find me wherever you want to move me, but people aren't going to find downtown.
Well, I think you've made the point. It's not about access, it's about acceptance, normalization, being just another business next to another business. And that is not something that Fergus Falls sought. We didn't go to the state and say, hey, can we please do this? This was mandated to us from the state.
Absolutely.
And we did the best we could to come up with something, and here we are.
Well, right, reasonable, reasonable, that's in the state law, reasonable. It's not what you deem reasonable, it's what the state would deem reasonable. And I just want to say, for my part, at Spees Park, I love the events that are held down there, I love the number of people that it brings, they sell beer down there all the time, and that isn't talked about here tonight. So how do you say that that's a children's attraction and allow beer to be sold at that children's attraction?
That's a wrong call.
What are, Your Honor, maybe-
Kevin Anderson was up here, wanted to speak. I think we should really hear from him. Thank you.
My name is Kevin Anderson, owner of Midwest Printing. And, you know, I listen to all of this, and everybody's all for cannabis and stuff. We're not against that. We are against it being next to our building. Talk to the police chief, there is going to be odors that are coming through that common wall to our business and our client, or our tenants. So it's all an issue of being downtown. Why do you have to be downtown? Move out of town, or on the outskirts of town, or whatever. This, I've been in business with my parents there at Midwest Printing, well, since 1960, and we have always followed everything with the city and supported them, and this issue has really kind of pushed me to my limit. We never were asked of a business like that coming into our area. I hear everything about, oh, the smells are not going to be no problem and all this, and we have heard from the police chief, there will be. So I'm going to keep it real simple, and I'm going to just say, we are very concerned about this, and it needs to be moved to a different spot, other than where they're proposing. That's all I have to say.
Now, we're good, but we need to move on, but it'd be time to talk about when we get to Elevate. This is just about Sugar High, so.
Your Honor, will you repeat the resolution? No.
Mortensen.
No.
Rachel.
Yes.
County.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Kwame.
No.
Layton.
No.
Hicks.
Yes. The next item is the same discussion for Elevate.
That resolution is the same as the last resolution.
Thank you, Scott. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Thank you, Jim.
I don't think we can have a condition on there for signing off on upstairs residents, there are none.
Yeah.
That's true. I was just thinking that, there's no residents above them. Two doors down, there is, but not there.
So it would just be with the conditions of a five-year timeframe for the interim use, business hours limited till 10 to 8, no consumption or sampling on the premises.
Your Honor, can I, if Chris decided to move, would he have to go through this again, Rolf?
Yes.
So it wouldn't be such a-
Unless he moves to a B6.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to back up, Your Honor. Would you read the resolution we just voted on? What the terms and conditions were all?
The resolution was to approve the interim use permit for Sugar High with a five-year timeframe for the interim use, a written consent of the tenants from the housing located above the retail establishment, business hours are limited till 10 till 8, and no consumption or sampling on the premises.
So not the neighbors?
Correct.
Residents?
Yeah. Yes, Jim seconded it. So, anybody wish to speak to, somebody wanted to speak? Dwayne?
Dwayne Cookman. Mr. Kwame, Councilman Kwame brought up a good point, that, you know, it's the criteria for downtown, but on January 21st, in the minutes, and I took a look at it, is you had Little Chief that had all the zoning that was open. So I mean, it wasn't, you know, this was not the only option. There was another company or business that wanted to do it, and I don't hear that part of the discussion. And I don't think you'd have the same discussion with the 250 feet.
Bob? Well, you like to be quicker.
Robin Foss, Fergus Falls. Just to make clear, I'm not a cannabis consumer or THC. To look at economic development of bringing in businesses and not fighting them from expanding in this community sends a message that we're going to fight you every step of the way if we don't believe in your business. And so having, somebody had said about the liquor store, or I had said about the liquor store, there are more DWIs, deaths, lawsuits from drinking liquor. It's a controlled substance, but they can go in there as many times as they want and get as drunk as they want. And there's the same thing, how many feet is it away from Spees Park? It's a regulated consumption product, just like cannabis. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Bob.
Bob Noah, Fergus Falls. You can't tell by looking at me, but I'm an expert in this field. I know all about the culture, I grew up in the era, I've seen it the whole timeline. I know what it's going to lead to, I know what it's, uh, it's going to cause, and we've all debated those things in our own minds and with each other. But I want to thank the council and the mayor for not rubber-stamping. I appreciate all the conversation, back and forth, and however it turns out, it sure would still make a good town hall meeting.
Thank you, Bob.
Hi, my name is Maya Stock. I am the wife of Christopher Stock, who owns Elevate. I did not plan on speaking today, so I'm sorry, I'm a little, um, I would like to speak to the fact that there is a liquor store within 600 feet of Spees Park, there is alcohol sold at Spees Park. I would also like to challenge the thought in general of alcohol on this committee. I personally have seen the damage of alcohol, I have lived it. I had two alcoholic parents who both died very young because of alcohol. That is not a children-friendly thing, but if, if we're going to allow it at this event, at this place, it is only fair that you treat these both substances fairly. Alcohol is a very unresearched topic that is just accepted, socially accepted. Cannabis is not. With more research on the topic, people may understand the benefits to it. I am a cannabis user. I never was when I was younger. I was raised thinking the product was not acceptable. I became disabled four and a half years ago, and I became a cannabis user then. The amount of benefits that it has, the fact that I can function when I need to with a product that isn't going to put me in the grave, there is no research out there, none, to, to put that cannabis is a deadly product. Alcohol? There's massive data out there to suggest it. I, so my two things here are that I, I think businesses, if you're going to allow alcohol as sold at Spees Park, and I'm sorry, at downtown restaurants, kids sit right next to their parents while they sip alcohol. These businesses are just asking to sell in their store. They're not going to allow minors in, they're going to ID, they are following laws. And alcohol is regularly accepted, and a terrible substance. Thank you.
Emily?
Hi, Emily McKeon again. I just want to speak to the Spees Pavilion location on behalf of Elevate. Three things, really. One, half of the year, it's a parking lot, okay? Two, 100% of the year, the closest part of that parcel is a parking lot. And number three, since collectively, it seems as a council, you're really into the brass tacks technical details on this, Spees Pavilion is not an attraction, is a shelter that's rentable, it's privately owned for private or public events. Technically, what that means is that it is completely possible that no human being ever rents Spees Pavilion for an event again, because it's not a fixture, it's not an attraction. Thank you.
Anyone? Chris?
Um, I just want to say, I want to thank everybody for at least coming together today and hashing this out. Fergus Falls was one of the first cities in Minnesota to come up with some zoning ordinances and all that stuff, so I want to thank you guys for that. I do want to say that come January 5th, they're having the first license draw, and we will be in that license draw, because we're a social equity applicant. And one thing that the state has done with rural Minnesota is forgot about it in this bill. So, to have these conversations at a town hall or a town council meeting is great, and I want, I implore all of you guys to come down and have a conversation with me. I'm a registered nurse, I've read 300-plus studies on this topic. I am not someone that's, you would think that is a cannabis user, but I use cannabis quite often. So, I, I just want to implore you guys, please, come down, talk with me, tell me what the problem is, and if you guys could show me rentable spaces in B6, I would be really surprised to see that. I too, there's not much there either. B2 has a lot of available rentals there, and so does B3. So, I, I would suggest if you're not going to, you know, want to have this discussion every single year or every single five years, allow us to be in more places, because whether you like it or not, we're going to be in Fergus, and we can work together and build up this community that has seen a decrease in people moving here in the last few years. We went from 16 to 14,000 people in the last census. So, it's not that we're a growing community, so I implore you guys to at least come and have the conversation with me. Thank you.
I believe you meant to say June 5th for that license draw?
I think you said January.
What's that? Oh, no, the license draw is happening in June 5th, that just came out.
You said January, and that's.
That's my bad.
That's fine. And for what it's worth, the, the groups that met and put this stuff together last year.
Can you speak into the mic, Scott?
I thought I was, okay. We were working with these two businesses, yours and Sugar High, and you've played by the rules. And what we were putting together was, in effect, trying to fashion something that would allow you to do what you're doing, where you're doing it, because that's how we, that's how we framed it. And you didn't pick a new location and start over, and so your situation is different, and I think it's important to note that. But again, remember, this is for an interim use, and the by definition, interim use is temporary. It's a temporary permit, it can be rescinded, and it can be expired. And so you've got that to look forward to. If you want to spend a bunch of money on a temporary permit, that's your call, there are other options for you.
And again, if you could show me those other options, Scott, I'd love to see them in the B6 zone, because they're, they're not, they don't exist. I too, I, I found one place that would qualify as being available. So, i- if you could please show me these rentals, I would love to see them. And if you don't have them here today, I'll gladly come talk with you. I'm open to meeting with you, I have yet to speak with you, not to call you out, but if you want to go back and forth over this matter, I'm trying to, I've lived here for 40 years, I'm a registered nurse in this community, I've helped people in our town, I've helped deliver babies, to help, uh, helping people in our community. So, to think that I'm up here trying to further my own agenda or anything like that, I want to help our community with access to a thing that isn't accessible the most at this point. You have to drive over an hour. Some people in rural Minnesota have to drive two hours to go get medical cannabis, which it's a great program, but they left out rural Minnesota, just like they always do at the state level. So, I am just here trying to support our community in the best way I know how. I have four children, three of them, which have never been inside my business. My one is 22, and he's only, he's the only one that's been inside my business, so I take this very seriously. Thank you.
Just one thing that I would like the people to realize, um, the distance here in Fergus is 250 feet. It's much, that's another 50 feet more lenient than Minneapolis. DL is 1,000 feet to a school. So, you know, all's that I wanted to ask is that it be within the parameters, and definition from what the, you know, can be as far as what an attraction is, what is an attraction, you know, I, I, you know, there's places, probably like the Chamber might even say, I don't know, Lisa, but you may say that the River Walk is an attraction. As far as any other kind of a community, uh, to promote the community, you know, that does come up, those words come up. And as far as the city administrator, uh, you know, what the definition there, there is no hard definition. You know, I think we're trying to work it out, at 250 feet is more lenient than Minneapolis, and I think that was very generous. The only ask that I have, if that's an attraction, which I think it is, but that's just my opinion. There's nothing out there that says yes, it is, or no, it's not. So, there again, with an, with a ordinance, I can't vote yes on that.
Can I say?
Sure.
Now, this isn't perfect mapping or distance, but at 231 feet, we're at the back alley of behind those buildings that you can't even see through to see our business. At 250 feet, you can't even pull into a parking spot in Spees Park. So, are we calling the whole parking lot part of that children's attraction? Are you allowing kids to play in parking lots? I, I don't.
When I was a kid, I did.
Well, okay, well, so, I, I'm just. Oh, yes, I, I'm sure, but they also sell alcohol in there, right? Okay, then.
Right, it's getting out of order.
Hey, Chris, can I just say one thing to you?
Yes.
I appreciate your hard work. I know that Councilmember Mortensen visited you.
He did.
And had a lengthy conversation, and was very impressed how you ran things. He relayed that to me, and, uh, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, and I want to say, I, I thank him for coming in and having the conversation with me. The reason why we've run so well in the two and a half years is my background as a registered nurse, and my twin brother being in Upper Michigan, running one of the biggest dispensaries up there for the last three years. So, we are very serious about what we're doing here, and I, I, I agree with you, I have children, I don't want to see children using this, and I would implore you to go look at the Yarborough Study that shows an 8% reduction since 30 years ago, even though 25 states have legal recreational marijuana for sale.
Your Honor, can, Chris, can you stay there a second, just give me a little leeway here? Yeah, we had a great discussion, you and I, it was about an hour and a half time, I didn't partake in anything, I didn't grab any packages, I, I know that, but you know what I did, is I gained, uh, I gained a respect for you and, uh, and who you are now. What I want the city to know, and I want you to know, and I want Sugar High to know, is that I am, I am not against you guys in any way, I want you to know that. Cannabis will be in this community, I think probably, I won't speak for the council, but you both will probably be able to do that. One of the things that I am is, one, I, I'm a doctor during the day, and I look at things very intricately. When I look at an MRI, I look at a CT, I look at an X-ray, boy, I better know everything that's on there for that patient. And the other thing that I do is I do signs in the city, so when I look at things, I look at it from just the ordinance part, you know? Billboards have a certain length to be a part, that's the law, I can't break that law. In fact, the city turns me down multiple times over the years to do that. So, when I looked at this, I looked at this, hey, are we 250 feet from an attraction? We all know that's the, the difficult thing, the attraction, but I didn't want it to upend you, and I didn't want to set the precedence for somebody else coming in on that footage. Had nothing to do with cannabis, the discussion is not there, we'll have time for that when you both come up with your application, but this was a zoning issue, like Emily said, and I want to make sure you're safe. When you put a lot of money into that business, and you're going to start selling this, if someone comes along like me that measures from point to point every day, I don't want you to have a problem. That's it. So, the council will, will vote tonight, I think that will set it for both of you, the precedence, and let's just hope that it goes well going forward on that end, but I wish you the best. I, I gained a lot of respect visiting with you and, and your organization.
Yeah, and I want to, I want to thank you for coming down, and I will say cannabis isn't going to be in Fergus, it's been in Fergus for 70, 80, 90, I mean, however long this has been a city, so it, it's been here already. Controlling it is the big question, and I think we've shown that we can control what goes out and who gets it.
One last thing, Chris, so you know this, when you, when you hear this, that I took an oath of office for this city to, to solemnly swear to the US Constitution, Minnesota Constitution, and all local laws, and if this ordinance, ordinance 59, truly is 250 feet with an attraction, if it truly is, I cannot break that law, I cannot take an oath for the people of this city and then break it. The discussion about what it is later on will be there, but that's why I want you to know that, that that's where I'm at, had nothing to do with you and I.
Yep, that's perfectly fine, and I want to say, I, I'm an advocate for my patients as a, as a nurse, so.
You've been up too many times, Rolf.
I just want to say, Order, Ordinance 58 and Ordinance 59 differ on where to measure from, so to say that measuring from the edge of the parcel is quote-unquote, "written in stone," Ordinance 58 says, "from the attraction within that park." So, I just want to be clear with that. And the state did come out April 15th and put out a guidance for cities to where they should zone these places popu- uh, properly, and where they said was wherever liquor, off-sale liquor, or tobacco was sold, and in Fergus, that's B2 and B3.
Is this something that the city has seen?
It's part of all the guidance, yeah.
So, that is accurate information?
Yeah, it's always been suggested that it be zoned very similarly to those.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Yep.
Right, I think we should roll call.
No.
Mortensen.
No.
Rachel.
Yes.
Kildy.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Kwame.
Yes.
Leighton.
No.
The resolution is approved. The next item on the agenda is new business, which is none, and then the next item is council comments, so, um, we, uh, we'll start tonight with Councilmember Kramer, Kramer here.
Thank you. You know, I really haven't thought much about what I was going to say tonight.
You don't, you don't have to talk, and you don't have to use your.
Well, I'm going to take some time, and I'll at least say a couple things. I guess what I'm, uh, going to try to say here goes back to January 3rd of 2023, that had to do with Code 3125, as far as setting the council, the new council in place, and letting them take over the meeting instead of having the old council vote. I know that there's been back and forth on that, the, uh, the, um, commission that Al Frank is on, they had talked about that too, and, uh, different ways to interpret it from Rolf. And I know, Anthony, at that point in time, as we read it, you voted, um, that it wasn't appropriate to seat a new council, or to let the old council vote before a new council was seated. And that I, 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 you were very, you voted yes on that, that, hey, 3125, I think it reads this way, and now with some of the, um, the positions which actually I think goes against an ordinance, um, you're agreeing with, I guess. I, I, I don't understand that, and if you want to answer it, fine, I'll shut up and you can answer that right now, otherwise, you don't have to either.
I'll run through the end.
Okay, thank you.
Your Honor?
Okay.
No, I was just thinking.
Didn't want to lose my spot. You know, I'm going to, I'm going to change the tone here tonight to economic development. I want to remind the city and, and the council that we have some, some good debate coming up on economic development route that we want to take in the city. This is very important to me, it's very important to the people that I talk to in this city to, uh, make a robuste economy, so I encourage, I encourage the council to bring their proposals, and I look forward to our proposal, which is virtually ready, and the opportunity to do that.
Thank you. Scott?
I wasn't going to say anything, but we've worked hard on our proposal, somebody in the next to me worked even a little harder, but that's all I was going to say, I'm going to save mine for the town halls, I can't wait, the things will be long.
Um, I just want to highlight an event last week that the council was invited to, and I was able to attend. I don't think anyone else could, probably due to work commitments and things, but the Reduce the Rand Core event at the library last week. and things, but the Reduce Saran Core event at the library last week, um, was a very helpful event. It talked about how to, um, it was nonpartisan, I guess we should start with that, um, how to have productive, respectable conversations. And I think it's, it was something that, um, a lot of people could glean from, and I'm, I'm not naming names or saying any, but it was just a really helpful event, and I would like to thank the organizers that put it on.
I attended one last year.
It's a good event.
It was a good event.
Yeah.
Jim, anything you want to share tonight?
Yes, on behalf of the American Legion, I would like to thank the council for the new lights out at the ballfield. The guys are saying that it is fantastic. I haven't been out there for a night game yet, but I will be. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Laura?
Um, I just wanna say that every decision we make on this council needs to be grounded in fact and not emotion. Um, and we should really reflect a long-term vision that's gonna prioritize the well-being of our residents. Um, I believe that we have that responsibility to ask hard questions, and this council does. We do ask hard questions, examine every side of an issue, and we need to make sure that we are, you know, using taxpayers' dollars reasonably. We are gonna be going into economic development on Wednesday morning. Mr. Mortensen had mentioned that. I was gonna also mention that. Looking forward to it. We have three teams that are gonna be presenting, and three of us on each team.
Thank you. Scott?
One of the motions that was included in our consent agenda tonight was for the town hall meetings and the quarterly town hall meetings. And I think it's fine that there'll be town hall meetings. Uh, what's probably not clear and what will need to get worked out, and I'm sure it will be, I'm not worried about it, is who's actually running it, what's the agenda, what's the point? And try to make that clear. I think that would be really helpful.
I think the goal on that is that council members can request to run a town hall meeting, and, you know, those council members requesting it would be responsible for running it. So...
That wasn't really a part of the way the motion was written, so there really was no definition for it. It was just, okay, we're gonna have it happen.
I think the motion was to allow it to happen. So... Mark?
Uh, give me a few minutes, please. Division of the House. I believe there's only one decision in most, most debates. It's right and wrong. As at the very beginning of time, the way must be balanced, yin yang. So, as some of the new council members have moved the cheese, other members have taken offense. Unfortunately, the public observes the contention. I would like to address the citizens and taxpayers of Fergus Falls and clarify to the few who believe there is a division in the council. Let me share my observations of the council over the last nine years. Previously, the city council meetings typically lasted 45 minutes. Most of the city business was approved by a simple cookie cut without any review of or competitive analysis for the taxpayers' money. Again, I'm an outsider view of that, so don't shoot the, the storyteller. Then, the only reason that the council mem- meetings lasted longer was to spend $90 million over the last nine, 10 years on special wants, studies, strategic planning, nonprofits, memberships, TIF, committee reports, and yes, there were some necessary city expenditures. Now that the council members who recognize this are simply wanting a new look, I wanna look at the department responsibilities, staff job responsibilities. I wanna review all committees and commissions. It's quite obvious that tonight that some of the committees were a little short on their, uh, understanding of cannabis and 250 feet. I wanna reduce burdensome ordinances. I wanna maintain and monitor all contracts to third parties, uh, third-party nonprofits, and eliminate this unnecessary spending. All in effort, number one, lower real estate taxes, support existing businesses and residents. That's the foundation of Fergus Falls, let's not forget. And then again, use that foundation for new economic development. Unfortunately, one second. Unfortunately, the new council has inherited the past council's overspending, mandated debt service, and continuing operating losses. I will always fulfill my oath to the best I can. In closing, accountability is most important to me. Nobody's perfect, although. Don't try to flip the script and make my reactions the issue when the past actions lit the match. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. I think, uh, just to go back to, uh, uh, Councilmember Palmis, uh, Kramer's question, I think, um, like everybody, the ordinance that was approved last year was based upon the, the two, maintaining and sustaining the two businesses that were downtown. And, you know, there was no, there was no definition of, of a, a, a Spees Park or City Hall being an attraction. I think it was, you know, it was, you know, centered around the use by minors, and that was my understanding, and I believe that's what we all voted on last year. Granted, obviously, I, I, you know, Mark wasn't certainly on council, um, so, um, but that, that's why. So, um, with that, um, announcements, um, we have a City Hall work session, as, uh, Mike had, had brought up. It should hopefully be some fun and interesting conversation. Uh, three different perspectives on, uh, on economic development, and so that will be here at 7 o'clock. Um, with that, if you could get your, if you've got a PowerPoint presentation, if you could get that to, uh, land, kind of by, by, by 3 o'clock tomorrow afternoon or, or earlier, that would be great. We have a, obviously, a, um, a committee of the whole, uh, next, uh, May 14, and a city council meeting on May 19. And I also have another announcement regarding planning commission. Um, they're looking for public input. On, uh, May 27th at 5:15 PM in city council chambers, residents are invited to share their thoughts on standalone garages in residential neighborhoods. Under current city code, uh, garant, garages cannot be built unless they are accompanied by a primary structure on the same lot or an adjacent lot. Uh, this will be an informal discussion, and will help the commission consider whether city code should be updated to allow for this particular land use. Written comments and questions may also be submitted, uh, to the community development department, uh, at, you know, at the meeting, uh, prior to the meeting, so they can be read. So, input on that. Uh, with that, there is nothing else. The meeting is adjourned, and thank you, all of those that you hung in.